Hey John, can you hear me okay?
Let's try this. Yes, I can hear you just fine.
My initials on my screen say UU. Is that what shows up here too?
UU. That's interesting because what I am seeing on this screen is CW. Or Commissioner Wilson, just like mine, should be showing as CR.
Yes, sir, it does. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
And Tammy shows up as commanding officer.
CEO. I'm trying to figure out how to. I mean, we've got a few minutes here, almost 10. I'm trying to figure out how to mute myself without muting everyone. You know how this is kind of a new Teams thing tonight?
Yeah, the top right side of the screen should have a mic icon. If you click on the mic, it'll mute just you. And you should be there. You're muted now.
That will do it, commanding officer.
Okay, I got it. All right. You know. You guys are the only ones on so far, but so you know, when I do the lineup sometimes for who goes first, I often do it with who signs on first. So Commissioner Wilson, you're going to be at first on our discussions.
Oh, actually, last meeting, I was going to to mention that, that I hope that it was a rotating. Who's first, because they can sometimes set the tone for the full discussion. So it should rotate amongst commissioners.
Yeah, yeah. And and I have generally just by kind of, okay, when people sign on, I just kind of put the list out. So but I agree that it does. That's what I like to do is shake it up. So let's see how this pans out.
I'll tell you what, very good. But I'll make sure that I come late to the meeting in that case.
See, I I knew I was like, should I say this? Should I not? So you know what? I might do it differently next month. So you know, it'll be a surprise.
Well, I was only kidding about that. It's worthwhile to check on everyone's sense of humor once in a while.
I know. Okay, John, please know that mine is still intact. It helps me keep my sanity.
I'd say you've got the right attitude.
Sat, I think it's only fair to warn you, there may be a dragon over your shoulder.
Over my shoulder?
I I'm just kidding. Look like there's a poster on the wall.
Oh. But you can't see it now, right?
No, we cannot. When you first came on, the video was on.
Yeah, that was from. Some grandkid or something years ago. Thanks for warning me, though.
They were a team.
Yeah.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Ontiveris. Can you hear me okay?
Good afternoon, Chair Ontiveris. This is Jess with staff. Hear you perfectly fine. We've got most of our staff here. I think we're waiting on one more staff, but anticipate us being ready to kick off study session here in two minutes.
Okay, I like up to the minute, we've got four commissioners here. But we don't have to have a quorum. So at four, we will start promptly.
Okay.
All right, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Ontiveris. It is four o'clock PM. Would you please start our Planning and Zoning Commission study session?
Yes, thank you, Chair Ontiveros. Welcome, welcome commissioners and any members of public who are in on. The Planning and Zoning Commission's study session for today, January 13th, 2024. I'm sharing your agenda on my screen now. The first item on study session agenda will be an overview of applications that are scheduled for public hearing next month. Next month's public hearing, that'll be on February 28th. The first item is a zone change, ZC 2302. It's a request for a zone change from the G-zone. General zone 10 acre minimum to AR4 agricultural residential 4 acre minimum. This is on a 17.25 acre parcel. It's in the generally in the parks area, however, does not fall within the parks area plan. Bob Short from our staff is managing this case. I see he's already shared his screen. So Bob, go ahead and give the commissioners an overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Can everyone hear me and see my screen?
Very great. See your screen.
Great. All right, this is a deer farm, deer farm road zone change, CC 23002. And in this case, the property owners Tara Rouge, LSC of Flagstaff, the applicant David Harton of Flagstaff. The property is located about one half mile west of the Pittman Valley Road on the north side of Interstate 40. Excuse me, the zoning, the current zoning is general. And the size of the parcel is 17.25 acres. And this request is a zone change from the general zone, that's 10 acre minimum parcel size to the AR agricultural residential zoning. With a 4 acre minimum parcel size. And that would allow for the development of property, property to be divided into four lots or four parcels. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. Just for reference, this is basically Pittman Valley, what we know as Pittman Valley, and this is the exit, the interchange for Pittman Valley right there. This is a zoning map. Again, this is the interchange for Pittman Valley right here. This is the deer farm. And this is subject property, of course, and this is the Deer Park subdivision. It's a pretty old subdivision in the AR1 zone, basically one acre lots. It's a dry subdivision, as far as I can tell. And then across the road here, across the interstate, not very impacted because the interstate, this is the Kadapa area with the hotel and the Kadapa temple right there. And as Mr. McNeely is saying, it's not in the parks plan area, this green, this line right here is the boundary. It's about one quarter mile, so really close. But there are quite a few policies in the parks area plan related to zone changes, and this, they would not apply to this this property. This is a narrow photo of the subject property. Again, you can see the subdivision over here, almost fully developed, I think it is fully built out. It's been there for quite a while. Deer Farm Road runs across the southern part of the property in an easement. They'll show you in a minute. It looks like it's pretty clear with the, you know, obviously forest, national forests to the north. And this is kind of a rudimentary site plan, but it works for for our purposes. And it shows that the applicant wants to divide the property up into basically equal parcels about a little over four acres in size each. And this is the, this is a survey that we required so we could tell exactly where the easement was. So this is basically an easement for a right of way. That's dedicated to the county. The county does maintain Deer Deer Farm Road. This easement's about 80 feet wide. And we have talked to the Public Works Department. They indicate they would not support four new accesses off of this road. Excuse me, I think someone needs to mute their their mic.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Short. That just happened. So please go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So the, basically, they would take, they would, they would have one easement or one access onto Deer Farm Road and create some kind of like frontage road. A frontage road to a frontage road since I 40 is here and Deer Farms right next to it. And to create those accesses all separately, they had to create another easement. All right, with that, I think that's about it. With that, are there any questions from the commission?
All right, Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
Okay, I'm curious about a couple of things. Public Works. Do they consider that a collector or an arterial?
I think in this case, it's a collector, but I'm not positive. I really haven't looked at that.
I can understand some of their concern, but this is more a procedural matter. I would like to know, I'd like to see a little more support for what they want when they ask for this. Because I'm thinking back to the Goat Sanctuary a while back, which a traffic impact analysis was asked for. That seemed to be absolutely totally unnecessary and a considerable arbitrary and overreach. We refused to put that in as a condition at that time. So a little bit of support for the conclusion they come to, that's something I'd like to see. And a collector, yeah, I can understand what they're asking for, but in the future, for this sort of thing, I'd like to see a little more information and data to support what they want.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I can check with them on that, and I'm not really sure this could be considered an arterial. It does not, I just know there aren't really any properties that access this. But I can see why they wouldn't want four different driveways along here. That kind of makes, that makes sense. But we can check with them some more and make sure we get some more feedback from them on on why, why they would be requiring that.
Just one thing, I do want you to know that I am not opposed to what they're asking for, because I can understand that. When you consider you've got the Deer Park subdivision to the west of them, and that could have an impact as far as traffic. And I've been out that way quite a number of times in the past, and I know that under some circumstances, you can get sufficient traffic. To warrant what Public Works would like to see for this. So. But just a little supporting data would be good. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob, this is Jess with staff. We can, we can check, we can have them verify with the EDCM, because we'd rather be able to tie that, any requests to what, what is the classification of the road? And what, and what does the EDCM have to say about that? That's, that's why we've, that's why we've updated that document recently.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Short, I believe in the beginning, you talked about the subdivision to the west and called it a dry subdivision, is what I heard. Does that have to do with prohibition or what?
Sorry about that, Commissioner Wilson. Dry. In 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 many parts of the county, there aren't, there isn't water available, so they haul water. In this case, there could be. I'm not, I'm not really sure, to be honest with you, but it 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 might be that they don't have water, like wells, and they have to haul water in that subdivision. I know it's pretty deep, it's pretty deep out here, but it's possible they did dig a well for the entire subdivision.
Okay, thank you. And I wonder if you could go back a couple of slides that showed the proposed division of lots. I'm looking at what the width of each lot. So the driveways would be about 275 feet apart, in theory. If there were one for each lot.
Yes, so they would be, yeah, it depends on where they'd like, want, want to put them. But typically, my thought is they would probably come in, you know, at this end and go down, and then the last one could just be straight. But there'd have to be some type of easement, you know, per Public Works request on this, is that there'd be an easement. So you wouldn't have those accesses all off of the same thing. They'd be off of an easement through here.
Or they could have perhaps just two that's, you know, met at the lot lines, right where you're at, right there, one there and then, so we'll see next month, I guess. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is still raised. Did you have more? Okay, I'm thinking not. All right, on with that, Mr. Short, I believe that's all for that one. I'm not seeing, no, hold on. We have Commissioner Ruggles' hand is raised. Go ahead, Commissioner Ruggles. No. All right, I think that we're done with that one. So Mr. McNeely, if you could go to number two, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Case number two for next month's hearing, CUP 2376, is a request for a conditional use permit for a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence. This is also in the parks area, not far from where we were just looking. Kelly Bingham from our staff is managing this case. So Kelly, if you want to go ahead and share your screen and give an overview of the request.
Thank you. Can everyone see my screen okay?
See you.
Great. This is CUP 2376. And their request is to use an RV as a permanent residence. This is very similar in use to what we've seen before, in that someone just wants to live in their RV. However, it is a different zoning. This is an undersized parcel in the G-zone. Typically, this would be permitted by right, just a small administrative permit from staff if the parcel was over 10 acres. But because it's oversized, it does need to come to the commission. The applicant plans to dump waste in a permitted septic system that's already on their property. They would haul water or have it delivered, and they would use an RV pedestal for power. And they would fix the RV with jack stands and panel it so that the wheels don't show. Here's a vicinity map. Like it was said before, this is in parks, very close to the last project we looked at. This is actually south of the I-40. You can see it right here, outlined in red. And this parcel is 0.66 acres, so about two thirds of an acre. Here's an aerial photo of the property. You can see that there used to be a structure here. It seems like there was a house on site at some point, but it's no longer livable, according to the applicant. They're actually trying to clean up the property, and that's why they're requesting this RV. They would like to put a caretaker out there to help clean up. And here's the proposed site plan. You can see the septic system on the north side of the property. And then they'll be putting the fifth wheel very close to the previous structure in the center of the property. And that's all I have for you today. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Okay, Ms. Bingham, this is Chair Ontiveris. I'm not seeing any. So Mr. McNeely, please move to case number three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case number three is CUP 24002. This is a request to modify conditional use permit for Camp Colton, which is a community service agency camp. Zach from our staff is managing this case. So Zach, if you want to share your screen and give an overview.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Chair Ontiveros and commissioners, this is case CUP 24002. It's the Camp Colton renewal and expansion. For some history on this property in this case, it is owned and operated by the Flagstaff Unified School District. And it is an environmental education camp, so students learn about ecology, geology, forest health, and other. Aspects of the natural environments here in Flagstaff area. It also serves students that are not in FUSD, but are in other school districts within the county. And the way it operates is they would have 100 students maximum on site with 130. If you're counting the staff members that would be on site as well. And they do classes, day classes for first and second grade students. Sixth graders stay on site for four days while they're learning, and seventh and eighth graders stay for a period of six days. The original CUP was approved in 1970, and that was renewed without modifications in 1996. And in 2011, the 2011 CUP is set to expire in 2026. And I want to clarify for the commission that this is not a commercial campground in the general zone that is required to meet the zoning ordinance section 3.18, but rather it's a community service agency camp, which was allowed in the zoning ordinance far prior. So it wasn't until 2019 that we required the, or that we allowed the campgrounds in general zone if they were just commercial campgrounds. So they don't meet all the same standards, and it's sort of on a case-by-case basis on a master plan. So here's the vicinity map. We have the Fort Valley area, and here is Highway 180. Forest Service Road 151, also known as Hart Prairie Road, comes off of Highway 180 and touches the property. It then goes further north through other in holdings in the Forest Service, over the Nature Conservancy, and then back to Highway 180. So this is, these are the subject properties. It's two parcels totaling just over 33 acres. And this is an aerial photo. So the existing structures on site are the lodge building. There are 15 cabins shown here, two restroom facilities, and there's sort of an unimproved driveway through. And the rest is pretty much undeveloped. And I took a few photos just directly off of Google Maps, so I didn't take these photos. But here's the existing lodge. Here's a photo of, they have a fire ring, and here you can see one of the students. This is, I think, from the more easterly parcel, looking east. And this might be some ski trails from Snowball here that you can see. So beautiful property. And I tried to highlight and read some of the new things, but first I'll go over, I think I showed you before. Here's the lodge, restroom facilities, and then existing 15 cabins. But they are proposing a future bathhouse and 18 new cabins here, these small squares. They're also looking at making some improvements with aggregated, compacted aggregate base for driveway here and some parking spaces. They will have in sort of an open-air astronomy plaza here and a new lodge here. So they'll keep all the existing things on the property, but then also add this new lodge. So they'll have two of those, a new play area, and this is the more westerly one with Hart Prairie Road here. This is the more easterly parcel, so they just want to add an archery area here. And they had some pretty good submittals. So here are the different materials they would use on the lodge. And it's sort of maybe a modern design, but it fits in well with the natural environment surrounding it. And they also had some renderings.
Hey Zach, we're not hearing you right now, but I don't see you muted. So just. Yeah, hear me now.
Okay, did you hear me on this slide?
Nope, didn't hear you on the floor plan.
Okay, interesting. So this is just the floor plan, and there is a nurse's office here, as well as quarters for other staff, a kitchen, and a great hall.
Mr. Shorts, if you're pointing things out, I'm not seeing a pointer moving on our display either.
Okay, do you see one now?
Yep, seeing it now.
Apologies for these issues here, but yeah, so just different nurses' office, kitchen, great hall, different rooms here. For some other details on the application, they're not looking to add any additional occupancy. It would just be these new facilities. They did also submit a fire and emergency services plan that they developed with Summit Fire and Guardian Medical. And the applicant is currently working with the Coconino National Forest to update their access permits. So in this case, staff's considerations are going to be, you know, this is a historic use, and it's not becoming substantially more intensive. The new structures appear to be consistent with the natural surroundings. And environmental and ecological education is really important. And I believe that the comprehensive plan has many different goals and policies that would support this use. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Shorts, you said there's no additional occupancy, but we're adding a whole bunch of new cabins. That doesn't seem consistent with, can you help me understand that?
Yeah, Commissioner Wilson, what I mean to say is that we're not adding more people to the site. It's just new structures. That's at least what the applicant's narrative states.
Because it sounds like they're doubling the number of cabins, but you're saying they're not going to have any more people.
I think that's a good point, and I'll talk to the applicant about it. But as far as their submittals indicate, they're not adding any more people to the site. I'll definitely make sure to talk to them and add some detail into the, into the staff report.
Okay, and then your previous slide said ecological education is important. Who made that determination?
So I think you'll see in the comprehensive plan that was developed with many stakeholders and Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group, that sort of thing. There are goals and policies that support education, especially ecological education and that sort of thing. So it's not my personal viewpoint.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Best, you're muted.
Thank you, ma'am. If you, if you're going out there, if any planners going out there, please let me know and see if I can make the trip with you. Also, has our wildlife planner been over this? There's a lot of wildlife up there.
Right, Commissioner Best. So I'm not sure if the Forest Service Road 151 will be open at this time. So I saw in the past, there were some photos in the last case that staff, it was about the same time of year, and staff did cross-country skiing to the site. And I'd love to do that, but I don't have cross-country skis. So if anyone has some that I could borrow, maybe we could try that kind of excursion. But aside from that, I possibly, what we've done in this case before is just kind of post a notice near where the gate is so that people who would otherwise be going up there might be able to see it. But I'll check into it, and if I'm going to the site, I'll definitely invite any commissioner who's interested. As far as Ms. Simmons, the urban wildlife planner, I did ask her if she had any comments on the case. And though there will be some more footprint, she didn't mention that there was anything additional that she was looking for. And I think she's here with us right now, if you'd like to hear some from her as well.
Sure, let's get a snowcat, dude.
That'd be awesome.
Borrow one from the ski area. And if our wildlife planner would like to comment, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm here. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Schwartz had it right. I did look. There, there is definitely a lot of wildlife there, and they are in some linkage areas, some movement zones for wildlife. And I did not have any specific wildlife concerns, with the exception that we did pass along a request to the applicant to maintain any large diameter trees and not take those down. But other than that, I did not have any concerns, even though they're in a big wildlife area for two reasons. One is that even though they're changing around some things within their footprint of the camp, they're not adding a bunch of stuff. They're not doing a lot of new ground disturbance. Like they're not destroying a lot of new areas of habitat that would probably be used. And they've been there for a long time. And the reason they're up there is to educate kids about nature and about wildlife, among other things. And therefore, I thought if they saw some animals, that would actually be pretty neat. And I did not think this would be a large disturbance to wildlife up there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So Mr. McNeely, if you could please go to Community Development Department update, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Taveras. So Department Update, items one, two, and three are all falling under our Long Range Planner, Melissa Shaw. So I believe Melissa's with us and can give you an overview on those three items.
Thank you, Jess. Good evening, Commissioners. I do have a couple PowerPoints to share with you on items two and three. But on regarding item one, funding for the Route 66 Brownfields Grant. The initial grant that we had is now closed. And as we've been, been talking about the past several months, a new grant application has been submitted to the EPA. I initially thought that the decision would be made this month. It will actually be made this coming spring. So we don't have a clear date on when the EPA will actually make a decision on that grant. So I just wanted to update you about that, and we'll keep you posted as soon as we hear. Are there any questions about what that entails? Okay, so the next item is an update on the regional plan, the Flagstaff Regional Plan, which we are working with the city on in terms of getting that prepared for final adoption and voter approval in 2025. So I have a PowerPoint that I can share with you regarding the, the most recent, this is actually a modified version of what the Regional Plan Committee saw last night regarding the scenario choosing. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And go to the beginning.
Not seeing your screen yet, Melissa.
Okay, hold on a second. Sorry about that. Okay, now do you see it?
Yep.
All right, I'll start from the beginning. And so I think we've been talking about the Regional Plan Committee. I believe last night was their third meeting. And they're meeting about once a month to review where we are with the Regional Plan Update. And then, beginning next month, they'll start to actually review draft chapters, goals, and policies. And so last night, one of the items on the agenda was to get an update on the scenario choosing and the priority quiz that has been going on since November. So this, this PowerPoint summarized as that, and I'll try to go pretty quickly so we can then also focus on our comprehensive plan update. So there were two, two portions to this. There was one, a quiz that helped participants understand what their preferences were for development and growth in the Flagstaff region. And then there was an actual second part to it where they could choose a scenario. And the scenarios were, were developed through all the workshops that have been going on, where different, where participants got together and came up with, with ideas for how growth in the region would look. So you can see, based on who took what, 50, 557 participants took the priorities quiz. And then 400 and about 449 participants actually did the scenario choosing. And you can see the split by city and county.
Hey Melissa, you're still on the, on the title slide.
I'm sorry, I don't know why it did not pick up the.
Yeah, if, and, and it's, and it's not in presentation mode.
Okay, well, let me stop this, and I will go back to this, so. Okay, my apologies. Okay, I might have to come back to that because I closed the presentation. If you give me a moment, I'll find it.
Mr. McNeely, while Ms. Shaw is doing that, do you know offhand, what, what is the population of Flagstaff now?
Boy, we should know this off the top of our heads. The.
I, I know. I feel badass.
It's right around 77,000.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's under, under 80. And then, so it's under 80,000. Then when we get to the Flagstaff, that's within the city limits. Then when we get to the Flagstaff Regional Plan, the Flagstaff Regional Plan area, I believe, is in the 90,000 range, if I'm right, Melissa.
It's about 90, 97,000.
97, so under, under 100,000, right? And then when we get to the full county, I believe that, that is about two-thirds of the county's population is within the Flagstaff Regional Plan. And I believe the county population is under 150 presently.
Okay, so on, in this regional plan, there's 97,000 and 550 participants? Is that, is that right?
So far, that is, that is the numbers of people that have actually come to workshops or taken the survey online.
Okay, that's, that is, that is a shockingly low amount. I mean, I don't know if that's normal, but that's like 1% or less. How, how is word getting out there to this population that lives within these boundaries? The Flagstaff Regional Plan boundary? How are these people being notified that this is going on? What, what is the method of notification?
Various methods. I mean, Melissa, go ahead and share your screen when, when you're ready.
Right, and I, go ahead, and I'm, I've got that. I just, I had to go back and pull it out. Sorry, the downloads.
Yeah, go ahead and share when you're ready. But actually, Sarah Dexter, the, the, the city's, the city's Long Range Planning Manager, last night, did, did discuss this some about the various outreach methods they've used. What, what they're seeing as significant with their participants in these workshops. And they're workshops. It takes, it takes some effort and some time to go through, to go through this process of, of the scenario choosing. It's, it's not a, it's not a quick survey. You know, it's not a quick survey you could do on the phone or in person, say, like we do with some of our quick surveys, our intercept surveys at the, at the fair. It's, it's an in-depth survey. And, and the committee members, and I think Commissioner Ruggles can attest to this too, on, on what he's heard, being a member of the committee. The committee members have, have taken this, because many of the committee members are plugged into different, you know, different parts of the community. And the committee members have really pushed this within their neighborhood organizations, within their, their various organizations and groups that they're a part of.
Yeah, Jess, I can add to that too, because I know that there were mailers mailed out region-wide. And, you know, they've been building email lists. There's been a lot of social media pushes, as well as newspaper articles, kind of a lot of the, you know, ongoing messaging that, that we do with these projects. Can you see the screen now?
Yes, and please, and please go ahead. That was just simply, like I said, almost a filler while you were getting that done. So please go ahead, Ms. Shaw, with your presentation.
Commissioner Wilson, could I just add one quick thought?
Yes, please.
Having just completed the Doni Park area plan process, we had over seven, or nearly 700 respondents to the survey from Doni Park. So a hugely smaller sample size and a much better response rate. So your, your concerns about the, the rate of response here, I think, are probably well warranted.
Yeah, and, and you know what? We can get to that. Thank you for that, that comparison of the Doni Park Regional Plan being 700 with a much smaller sampler size. So we can, thank you for that. And Ms. Shaw, to stay on track, please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, and that's an important point. We can certainly discuss that further. There is more detail I'd like to share with you here. So, yeah, as far as the survey results then, and this is where some of it's very interesting. And looking at just some of the top priorities, and I'm not going to get into detail about each of these. But the top priorities for the future would be housing that is more affordable, more options for walking and biking in rural and suburban neighborhoods, and growing in a way that reduces impact on climate change. So this is something that. So, um, this is something that came out of the, uh, the priorities quiz. And then, um, in terms of the climate goals, this is not a slide to really um, focus on for the county because the county does not have a climate plan. Um, but in terms of housing type, um, the question was, while all housing types will likely be built, which type of housing does the Flagstaff region need most of? And the response was more middle housing, like townhomes, duplexes, duplexes, and ADUs. Um, and then, more compact, single-family housing. So, that was a response to that question. And in terms of transportation options, again, the um, priority came out for safer options for walking and biking. And it was focused on central and east Flagstaff. Um, but I think that that is something that would possibly resonate throughout the portion of the county as well. And then, when it came to the actual vision statement, which statements about the future of rural and suburban communities do you most agree with? Uh, more housing and jobs should be added with new infrastructure to support this growth versus not taking on much more growth. And again, regarding the vision question, um, and this is, the question was about which statements about the future of existing neighborhoods do you most agree with? Um, and again, a focus on more housing options and affordability are created by adding more compact housing types to existing neighborhoods versus existing neighborhoods do not add more compact housing types. And these are, this is a question about workforce and economic strategies. And twice as many respondents agreed that investing in affordable housing is preferable to um, investing resources that attract large employers as a workforce and economic strategy. And then, this really kind of gets down to what we're starting to see as far as a preferred future land use um, map. Although, there are a lot of steps that will get to that. But initially, the respondents that actually took the scenario choosing portion of this survey um, said that across all of their preferences, this was called Scenario D, the Neighborhood Infill, was the preferred scenario over the other types of um, choices. So, um, that's what we're initially seeing based out of this initial um, this initial survey. And just to kind of uh, show you, if you had a chance to go to one of the workshops, there was a lot of information for people to evaluate. There's, where there was a workshop out at Cromer Elementary just a couple of weeks ago. It had a fairly good attendance, there were about thirty-five people there. Um, but in any event, they, uh, the workshop participants, whether it was in-person or online, because this was offered both ways, were able to look at the basically scenario results and then also look at the different scenarios, look at the options, and then understand what the choices are between them. And then, based on that, they could take the, the scenario choosing portion of the survey. And so, um, when this came out, this was, again, just some more detail about choosing the different, this is a little too much detail to get into right now, but I can certainly share this. But the, the basic um, takeaway here is that the Scenario D, um, the Neighborhood Infill was preferred over the other scenarios, followed by Scenario C, Urban Centers and Corridors. And you can see, they, there were some questions about uh, residency. So, um, City of Flagstaff residents preferred Neighborhood D, Neighborhood Infill, Neighborhood Infill a little bit more than county residents, although county residents did prefer that over um, the other scenarios. It looked like Scenario A, which is quote, "business as usual," meaning that existing goals and policies, for the most part, stay um, in place for the future. That seemed to edge up a bit. And then, the primary takeaways from that initial um, scenario choosing exercise was that the overall surveys indicate strong support for housing affordability or housing that is more affordable, growing in a way that reduces climate change impacts, preserving high-value natural areas, using water and energy efficiently, more middle housing and compact, single-family housing, as well as safer options for walking and biking. So, that was essentially uh, what the Regional Plan Committee learned uh, last night as far as some initial results from that scenario choosing. They'll be looking at a uh, a draft future land use map coming up in April. So, that work is in progress. And I can.
Okay, uh, Ms. Shaw, are you ready for questions? Because there's two commissioners.
Go ahead, and then I do have an update on our comprehensive plan as well after this. So, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay, all right, Commissioner Ruggles, you please go first, and go ahead and follow him up, Commissioner Best.
Okay, um, I have listened to what Commissioner Wilson had to say, and uh, I had the same thoughts uh, and a little bit more last night at the meeting. The uh, results of the survey, um, I guess to some people are a little disappointing, and especially in relation to the Doni Park Area Plan. The Doni Park area, Timberline, Fernwood, and Doni Park are probably the uh, largest populated entity within the regional plan. And I think that perhaps uh, a little bit of comparison between the survey uh, that uh, showed the results from the county in comparison to the Doni Park Area Plan Survey uh, might be worthwhile in looking at uh, some of this because uh, it didn't quite add up, as far as I'm concerned. You need to look at uh, the, what the county uh, has, what people in the county, especially Doni Park, because that is a large part of the population, you know, of the area outside of the city, but within the regional plan. And compare those results, I think, I think it would be very worthwhile to look at that because um, conclusions drawn might be uh, well shifted a little bit, a little bit different. Uh, although I see a lot of similar items, but nevertheless, this is just a suggestion for you, not a criticism.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Best.
Thank you, ma'am, sure. Um, could we bring up the scenarios again, please, so we could see the four scenarios?
Um, give me a moment. Okay, is, is that the slide you were thinking of?
That will work fine, thanks. Um, so, the two on the right are the two preferred, and Neighborhood Infill is the most preferred. So, in order to do that, you would have to change zoning in neighborhoods. Very tough to do. And I guess what we're really talking about here is the southern portion of the city near the airport, which I think is the growth area. And so, out there, we would be looking to create neighborhoods that had a, more of a mixed type of housing, more multifamily, mixed in with single-family homes. I can't imagine we're going to go into Coconino Estates and put up apartment buildings. Uh, because the pushback on that would be huge.
Well, Commissioner Best, I.
I, I, I always just wonder if we got enough of the, I think, again, we didn't get that many people, but um, you actually want to respond to that?
Thank you, yeah. So, just, just the um, so the plan will not change any zoning. That is, you know, something then that would be up to an individual property owner. The plan, though, will look at what the potential could be. So, it will have land use designations on different parcels as far as future potential um, what the future land use scenario might be. So, so that is something to play, pay close attention to. And I believe the Neighborhood Infill would look across the city and the region at different neighborhoods that could potentially accommodate additional growth and look at where um, that might be um, available for, you know, some additional housing types, for instance. But it won't automatically, by any means, change any existing zoning.
Okay, thank you. The other one.
Uh, Commissioner Best, you're muted. You started to say, "and the other one," and then you went silent.
Thank you. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, so, Scenario C, Urban Centers and Corridors, because that zoning is established, commercial, um, I'm not quite sure how we influence that, one way or another. I'm not sure, I'm not quite sure whether our desire to do anything with it's going to make any difference because you can't downzone it uh, without getting the uh, Goldwater Institute uh, knocking on the door. And um, which is to say Prop, Prop two oh seven, which means that if you change uh, zoning uh, on a piece of property and decrease the value, um, you'd have to compensate the owner. Um, so I think the urban centers and corridors are kind of locked in, and they're going to do what they're going to do. Um, I, I think the Neighborhood Infill would be interesting. But you know, we're not going to put up apartment buildings in Doni Park, I don't think. But the southern part of the city near the airport, that's kind of wide open, and that, that's, I think, where the difference might be made. Uh, one way or another on the survey where it might be useful. I, I, I would also say this about housing, and I've expressed this, I think to you, yeah. Through the uh, you, Melissa, through the, the Regional Plan Process, um, I talked once with Eric Wolverton about uh, whether we could build our way out of the housing crisis. And he's the head of Habitat Harmony, uh, Habitat for Humanity, I'm sorry, building the little, little cabins around town. And his, his response was, "show me where that has ever worked." Uh, "we're building housing as fast as is humanly possible, and rents are going up." Uh, "we are two hours from the fastest-growing county in the nation, and uh, I think the fourth, fourth biggest metropolitan area with four or five million people." Uh, "that's getting hotter and hotter." So, demand is going to be, we have a huge demand. To me, that means working harder on workforce housing, which is generally described as housing that costs thirty percent or less than the median income, that is encumbered somehow to remain workforce housing and not to be used but for uh, second homes or vacation rentals. So, it would be occupied by a Coconino County resident and stay below the median price for housing. And there are ways to do that, which are legal, ethical, and moral in this state where a, a lot of things are restricted by our legislature. But uh, the fact that we're not having that conversation and just sort of assuming that by creating more housing, we're going to create housing affordability, I do not make that assumption. I think with the demand that we're under, the pressure of that demand, as Eric Wolverton said, "show me where that has ever happened." And maybe you can, but uh, so I'll just make that point. I, and, and I have said before, um, oh, in, in, when we've been working on uh, codes in the past, that I don't like our definition of affordable housing because it doesn't talk about restrictions at all. It talks about creating cheap housing that can be picked up for second homes and vacation rentals. And it, it's simply not working. Uh, we are not, you know, we, we've got huge staffing problems at the hospital, at the city, at the county, fire department, police department, because people can't find affordable housing. So, I'm kind of looking for a different scenario and uh, hope that conversation can, can go on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Um, Ms. Shaw, do you want to respond to Commissioner Best's comments?
Thank you, I, I.
You don't have to. I just thought you might, you might be able to.
Thank you. I do, I do have a couple of um, just follow-up pointers on that. And um, just so the commissioners, I am making some notes about your comments, and we'll get back with the Regional Plan Team on them. The, I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the scenarios. And, and what I'm thinking might be helpful for next month's study session is to bring back to you all what those different scenarios actually uh, entail, what they meant, give you, to provide more details about those. Because the um, the Scenario D would be applied across the county. But in any event, um, in terms of, of workforce housing, as you can, as you saw from the surveys, affordable housing um, and workforce housing would, are very strong interests. They came up as a very strong theme out of all of these um, these scenario choosing um, survey takers. And that said, though, remember that Arizona v. Statutes does limit what we can actually do to require that. So, we're going to have to get creative in coming up with ideas and incentives for how to make that happen here because we cannot require inclusionary housing with our projects. So, we, we can talk about that more in more detail later, but we are somewhat, well, not somewhat, we are definitely limited by what we can require by, by state regulations. So, just to make that point, but it's um, it's something that we're thinking a lot about. And I will definitely want um, both the commission and then commissioners who are on the Regional Plan Team to, to stay current with the policies that will be proposed um, to the Regional Plan Committee. And I'll keep you posted as far as what uh, chapters will be reviewed. For instance, next month, the, and I'll, I'll go ahead and send you, make sure you all have the schedule. Um, because next month, they'll be looking at basically the Natural Resources Chapter. So, we're not there yet to the, to the housing chapter, but to make sure that you're all aware because the policies and the goals are really where that will be influenced. Just wanted to make that, provide that, that update for you. So, are there other questions on where we are with the regional plan? It sounds like we, we need to keep talking about this in pretty much in a lot of detail.
Yeah, um, Ms. Shaw, this is Charon Taveras, and I'm going to concur with that statement because there, you know, when we start getting into the meat of this, so to speak, you know what I mean? Really getting down, down into it. Um, I know that, you know, it's, we've got a half an hour left in the study session. I know that I do have some questions, but I'm just going to let those, those wait. But the one thing that I do want to circle back to, did anyone else mention the, we've got a population of ninety-seven thousand that will be impacted by this regional plan? But I believe you said there were five hundred and fifty participants, but four hundred and fifty that responded? Wa- was I right with that?
So, um, there were two basically um, parts to this whole workshop. Um, one was to take the quiz, and the quiz gave people an idea of where their priorities were in terms of housing and land uses and natural environment, transportation. And then, based on that, then they took the quiz um, where they chose one of those four scenarios, that which best matched their priorities. So, you can see the split here. There were of the quiz where people looked at their priorities, five hundred and fifty-seven, then four hundred and forty-nine actually um, responded to the scenario choosing.
Okay, okay, and the, the reason that I, I'm looking at that, so, four hundred and forty-nine on people responded to that, and I get that it's ninety-four percent of the people that took the quiz. It's a high percentage of the people that took the quiz, but the people that took the quiz is less than one percent. So, on, we have four hundred and forty-nine respondents in an area that has ninety-seven thousand residents that will be impacted by this plan. That troubles me. Um, I feel like. I feel like, I feel like a very small, small percentage is having, is having a large voice in this. And then I'm even thinking deeper in who are the four hundred and forty-nine people that are participating in this? You know, I mean, what, what is the sample size of, of diversity within the communities of that four hundred and forty-nine? But do you understand my question?
I do understand your question. And I, I did not attend the meeting last night, but I did get an update about some of the questions that the committee had. And I see Commissioner Ruggles can probably chime in and add to this, but my understanding was that the regional plan committee had similar questions. So I, I believe what the regional plan team, what we'll be doing is figuring out additional outreach methods to make sure that we do get that broader participation.
Okay, I, I think it's, I think it's really important because this is a long-term plan that's going to affect a lot of people. And I would like to see someone from every demographic. Do you have any breakdown on what the demographic of that four, of the four hundred and forty-nine is?
Not yet. I believe there, I believe though, that that will be, we'll be getting that information. This was just really preliminary because the workshops were closed just a week ago.
Okay, okay. I, I think that's important because I think that we need a broad representation of this. Okay, I, I'm just going to leave it there now. But I do, I do want it on the record that I am concerned about this very, very small percentage, not even one percent really driving the train, if you will, for ninety-seven thousand, almost a hundred thousand people. Something else that I, I just thought of, Ms. Shaw, when you were commenting that this is something that takes a lot of time. I don't know if I'm mischaracterizing your representation of what it is like to participate in this. But if that is what is keeping people from participating, I'm wondering if somehow to simplify it might be better because you have the working, you know, you have the working man, the working mom, the working woman, the working, you know what I mean, all of that. And they're trying to figure out how to get the kids to school, do the shop and cook the meals, go to dance class, all of those things. And it's, it's hard to do. It's hard to get some of that demographic into this. And I think I am somewhat troubled by the really, really low amount, like less than one percent. I'm going to leave it there. Right now, I know that I've made my point. Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is up. If you could go ahead, please.
Yeah, one quick comment. I want to put this in perspective for everyone. One thing I left out when I made the previous comment was the approximate population of Donnie Park. It's about twelve thousand. And as Commissioner Wilson pointed out, there were over seven hundred responses. So I will leave it at that. You can connect the dots.
Sharon Taveras, could I just make another point about who took the survey?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. If I use Commissioner Ruggles' math, that bumps it to six percent that participated in the Donnie Park Fernwood area timberline plan. I got that wrong. But that's five percent more than what we've going, what we've got going on now. So anyway, Ms. Shaw, go ahead with the point that you wanted to make, though.
And thank you. These are very important points. I just did want to mention that the region plan team made a very concentrated effort to reach out to those traditionally underrepresented voices. So there was a substantial push to involve neighborhood associations, to reach out to community groups that normally would not participate in a survey like this. So, so I, there, there was that, that effort made and I, you know, when we see more information, I, I will find out if we will be able to see additional demographics at point to that because that was part of the, the public participation plan strategy for, for reaching out to those traditionally, you know, missed populations. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And if you've got additional questions about, you know, what exactly was done, we can certainly bring that back to you because it was a big effort.
Okay. And, and yes, I certainly have no doubt about that. But I would like the demographics in there because it seems like sometimes the people that have the most time to do this, you know, sometimes it's
Right, yeah.
For, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay. And, and I just, I don't, I'm, I'm just going to leave it at that. I think that I've made my point, but it is a concern and I have put it on the record. And I will follow, you know, we will follow up with this, all of us together, staff and the commission as we go forward. And Commissioner Ruggles, I see your hand raised again.
Yes, very quickly, I would like to confirm what Ms. Shaw said about the meeting last night. Several people spoke about this and Ms. Shaw has reported this quite accurately. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I have not, is this being written up in the Arizona Daily Sun? Has anyone seen anything in the Arizona Daily Sun on this? That's just a quick question, anyone? Okay, so Ms. Shaw, you see the question and you see that no one asked an answer and apparently no one's seen it. I'm just throwing that out there that, that if this had front page representation, that might get a little bit more, but I'm not the newspaper owner. So I'm just going to put it out there. So let's go ahead and move on. Do you have number three, Ms. Shaw, the Envision 2045 as well?
I do.
Okay, why don't you go ahead with that?
And, and thank you very much for all that extremely important feedback. So we will not, we will continue with this conversation. And the next, I do have another short, much shorter presentation about the county's comprehensive plan update. So if you're ready for that, I will go into it.
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. So as you know, we are working on what we've called Envision 2045, updating the, the 2015 county's comprehensive plan. And just to give you, this is a very brief summary of the outreach efforts and where we're going. So I think we've been keeping you briefed on the focus group interview discussions that we've had. We've had so far countywide, oh, it is automatically advancing, twenty-seven focus groups. We have some more scheduled that I'll talk briefly about. We have connected with a hundred and fifty-two participants. And if you recall, these are intentionally small group discussions so that about five to ten people, so that we spend two hours talking with people about specific questions. We have a final focus group meeting scheduled up in the Fredonia and White Sage area next month. All of the focus group notes for each meeting is posted on our Envision 2045 website. And then we've taken all of those notes and we have started to draft theme summaries, which I'll talk about in a moment. Another push that we're making is to specifically involve youth. So what that means is we have right now, five scheduled meetings in high schools and they'll be similar to a focus group discussion, but different. We will structure it hopefully, hopefully, so it's interesting to the high schoolers and also use it as an opportunity to introduce urban planning and community planning, planning to the high schoolers. We've got alternative schools up in Page, the Page High School, Fredonia High School, Ponderosa High School here locally, and then also at NAU. So we'll be, that was part of our public participation plan strategy was to reach out to the youth. So we, we're really grateful. The superintendent of county schools reached out to the different schools and really helped us to to find students who volunteer to talk with us. So we'll be, we'll be reporting back to you what we learned from them. We've also been working on presenting to the different county appointed commissions and boards. And you can just see, we've talked to the workforce development board, we've talked to the different members of the tri-diversity councils. We'll be talking to Parks and Recreation Commission, obviously the Board of Supervisors, and then we need, there are some other county commissions that we need to get to and give them an update about the plan. And then speaking of surveys, we are in the process of developing and we hope it will be launched this week, actually, a countywide survey that is based on the focus group theme summaries. This, we have contracted with a survey firm to do a statistically valid countywide survey. So while the responses, we are looking for four hundred responses, they will be based on statistically valid survey methodology. And we are hoping to get initial results of that and bring it back to you in March. So that's something that we're very excited about and we're hoping to learn a lot from that as well as the the summaries, the theme summaries that we put together from the focus groups. And then finally, just a brief update, forming the CPAG, what is that? It's the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. We are going to be meeting with the Board of Supervisors February twentieth to discuss a selection process for that. And I'll, I'll give you some details on that on another slide. So the next slide, though, is to give you just a brief preview on the theme summaries that we, that we have seen during all these focus groups and just, I have a lot of pictures. We have a lot of pictures on the focus group meetings, but that's just one that was down in Oak Creek Canyon. So one of the first questions we asked was, what are community shared values? And these are the three main themes that have come out of that, valuing a vibrant economy that supports the integrity of our rural community lifestyle. The third, the second one is we are stewards of the land and natural environment. And thirdly, we are inclusive and respect the honor and diversity of our communities, including all people, their cultures, traditional knowledge and practices through strong community partnerships. So those are some of the, rather, those are the main themes that have come up of, out of these focus groups that we've held. And then we also asked participants about vision themes. And we have, I know we don't have a lot of time tonight. I do have also summaries about the issues and needs and then also some ideas for solutions and engaging community. But tonight I was going to share with you the theme summaries for both the values and then the vision themes. And my apologies for advancing automatically. So the six vision themes that have come up, and again, a vision for the future, so imagining what the county will be like in twenty years or even longer, would be that infrastructure and public services are collaboratively, collaboratively built and maintained in partnership with county communities. Looking for open space, trails, public lands, and recreation facilities accessible to all residents and visitors. And then tied to, with that, visitors to our county and community are encouraged and tourism is managed responsibly. The natural environment, resources, and ecosystems are resilient, protected, and sustainably managed. Another theme is that the county's rural lifestyle and style and character are preserved and encouraged by appropriate rural scale economic development and regulations that support affordable, sustainable, and innovative alternative lifestyles. And then finally, indigenous cultures are valued and preserved. So the next update I have for you is detail about how we're proposing that the comprehensive plan advisory group is formed, but I can pause here if anyone has any questions on either the vision themes or the value themes that we've learned about so far.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, please go first and follow up after him, Commissioner Wilson.
Actually, I am not up for this.
You know what? All of these Cs have got me confused. You're right, Commissioner Ruggles, you are not.
I know, I have too much to say, so.
No, no, you're good. Commissioner Best, you are first, and then Commissioner Wilson, please follow him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not exactly sure that my questions are exactly what you were asking for, but I'm going to ask them anyway, because first of all, I think all of us are signed up to get every communication. Didn't we do that previously? We're getting all the, all the commissioners are getting all the emails, is that correct?
You are all on the mailing list.
Excellent. Thank you so much. You know that I have submitted two proposals. One is a healthcare commission and another is a joint city-county plant ecologist position to the regional plan. Do I, and, and I've got those into a focus group. And I'm pretty sure you have those documents. Do I need to submit them in any other way to get them officially submitted?
I have those. I have those emails from you, Commissioner Best. And once, when, once the comprehensive plan advisory group is rolling along and looking at chapters, then you'll want to submit them again. But I do have those. And so that's good, you know, initial information to to wrap into our planning drafting process.
Okay, thank you very much. And could you send us these slides, please?
Sure.
These are great. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
Ms. Shaw, I was curious to know with the youth engagement that you're doing, will those survey results be broken out separately or will be, will they be given the same weight as the other survey results?
We're, we're going to summarize them separately.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that works. And then I think it was another slide past this one. Next one, maybe. There was a quick there at the end, yeah. So the county's rural lifestyle and character preserved and encouraged by appropriate rural scale in economic development and regulations that support affordable, sustainable, and innovative alternative lifestyles. Can you give me an example of what an innovative alternative lifestyle would be?
I, I sure can. I want to, I believe our first focus group was in the Valley area. And one of the things we heard from people that live there are wanting alternative wastewater systems to support their affordable alternative wastewater system. So, you know, this is a draft, by the way. You know, we can certainly better describe the overall themes that we heard. But that, you know, and so people in Valley, I mean, maybe they consider their lifestyles. I mean, there are a lot of RV as permanent residences, as you all know. That might be a way to describe that type of lifestyle. If that's not appropriate wording, we can certainly update this, but that's where that came from.
Oh, no, I'm not judging. And I was just, I was just looking for a definition is all. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't think we've defined it, but it's, they're going along, if in the document, the summary document, we describe each of these in more detail.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. And these questions are good. I know, Ms. Shaw, you took note of that one. But I'm, I'm thinking as these questions are being asked, if other people look at them, they might have the same question. So just kind of looking at, actually, I had the same one that Commissioner Wilson asked. So I'm thinking might want to, I get that it's defined somewhere else later. You know, just you see how we are kind of questioning this. It might, might be good if you could think of a way, I don't know, to clean it up a little, but I, I get that this is the beginning and it's a very good start. Just throwing that out there, that if we're asking questions, other people are going to too. So if you can get ahead of it, it might be a good idea. That's just my two cents for what it's worth. Okay, so do you have more presentation, Ms. Shaw?
Just a couple more slides. I'll be very quick. Thank you. That's, that's great feedback. We appreciate that. So as I mentioned, we'll be meeting with the Board of Supervisors on February twentieth and have, will suggest a process for them to invite the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. And what we are going to suggest and what we are going to suggest, and I don't know why that happens, that we will provide each supervisor, we we have a large list of the from focus group attendees. And so we will provide the supervisors with that list, and then other interested residents, community leaders, business owners who have expressed an interest in being involved in the Comprehensive Plan Update. And just to kind of back up a little bit, we started with the Board of Supervisors when we began this outreach to do the focus groups and and met with each one of them to ask, do you have a list of people that you could recommend that we contact to invite to a focus group? And then it literally snowballed, and then we grew the lists and you know how that works, where people learned about it, and they referred us to other people. So we have a pretty robust you know, I guess, database of potential candidates. So we'll provide that to the supervisors. They may have other people who they have in mind, but we would ask for them to recommend ideally four participants from from each district that they would want to see potentially involved, or rather, on this committee. And then they would send those contacts to staff, and then we will propose that we that staff will contact each of those potential invitees and get more information from them. You know, to understand, you know, what their availability is, level of commitment, what their expertise is, if you will, a topic of interest. You know, what groups they represent so that we have an idea of their ability and interest in participating. And then from there, this is where you all are get involved. Because we're going to suggest that the chair and the vice chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission then review those letters of interest and make ultimate selection for the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. The reason for this is, well, a couple of reasons. If you read Arizona revised statute, the role of the planning commission is very explicitly stated where essentially the planning commission is responsible for for writing and updating the comprehensive plan. And so without having to pull all of you into this, this would be a way where you would have direct involvement and engagement with the advisory with the advisory group. So this is what we thought of what we're planning to present to the board, but we, of course, wanted to give you all a heads up about this because we're hoping then to start on this as soon as possible and tentatively begin meetings with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group in March or April. So I will pause here. That's my last slide and get your feedback.
Okay, Ms. Shaw. I am not seeing any hands raised on this, so whereas all of us had a lot of feedback on everything else, it seems we I guess we're thinking about this. It makes sense to me. I'll leave it there. Again, I'm not seeing hands. So why don't we go? Why don't we go ahead and leave it there for today on this? And is there anything else, Ms. Shaw, that you would like to add?
That was the end of my that was the end of my presentation.
Okay, all right, thank you. And it looks like we're going to be having some very robust conversations ahead on this. It's interesting, good stuff. So thank you for your work. Mr. McNeely, would you please bump to Board of Supervisors update?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The only item we have scheduled for the board as of right now is scheduled for February twentieth. That is zone change. West Peak Zone Change at Naval Observatory Road that was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That will be going to the Board of Supervisors on February twentieth. Any questions on Board of Supervisor items?
I am not seeing any. So with that, let's go ahead and bump to Commission and Staff Roundtable. This is where staff commissioners it's it's anyone's time. And so I'm looking, and I am not seeing any hands raised by staff or commissioners. My clock shows five twenty PM. What we're going to do is take a break between the study session and the hearing that will start promptly at five thirty. So I will see you all then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. See you all then.